Shall, shall, conduct a public hearing. And, and I think, to staff's credit, I think the amendment tonight that you're addressing is beneficial and has environmental positives about it. And so, I'm not here to oppose that amendment, but I think that the process is clearly flawed and inconsistent. And I would remind you that you gotta publish in the newspaper after you pass it tonight, so don't forget that. And I'm still Jeff Kilgore, thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Kilgore, that's item seven on our agenda, and I promise you, we're gonna have a pretty good discussion about the process, and let the county attorney weigh in, so, you know, we're not gonna do it right now, but when we get to item seven, we'll have a good discussion. So, thank you. Yeah?
Mr. Chairman, I propose motions to add items to the consent agenda six point one. Move to add item six point one to the published consent agenda to approve a MOU with the Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency to submit a grant application to acquire and sustain equipment used by the Glen County Police Department's chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear explosive team.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Could you read that again, Bill?
I'm just, I'm just hung up here on the nuclear explosive team. I, I can't get, get past that.
Okay, I call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That's unanimous.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, move to defer item from consent agenda. Move to defer item number six, approve an intergovernment rental agreement with the Georgia Department of Community Supervision for the lease of two rooms on the second floor of the Glen County Office Park Building. The lease would be for a period of one year with four consecutive automatic renewal periods, and like to pull that and, and then defer it.
Second. Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Public hearing, land use. Public hearings will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position, and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in a time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Item one, SUP 4216, Pine Ridge Baptist Church. Consider a request for a special use permit to operate a church in the R nine, one-family residential zoning district. The church is existing and is proposing to expand by adding a new social hall. The church is located at fifteen Nimitz Drive in Zone R nine. Parcel ID zero three dash zero four eight three three. CSEC Incorporated, agent for Pine Ridge Baptist Church, owner and applicant. Pam?
Good evening, Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. As Chairman Browning said, this is a special use permit application for Pine Ridge Baptist Church. The church has been in this location since the nineteen fifties, which predates our zoning ordinance, so they are illegally grandfathered use. In residential zoning districts, churches are a special use, so to add this social hall, they are applying for a special use permit which will allow them to construct the social hall. This is the location, it's at the corner of Old Jessup Road and Nimitz Road. This is the future land use map, which calls for this area to be medium-density residential. These are photographs of the existing church. This is the site plan, the properties on the left, the, the, I don't know if I've got a pointer, I'm sorry. Let's see, there we go. This is the proposed addition of the social hall right here. This is the existing church and classrooms. The Planning Commission, at their regular meeting of February fourth, voted six to zero to unanimously recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of this decision, of this application. Here are your possible actions. Here are your possible motions. Staff and the Mail and Planning Commission recommend approval of application SUP 4216 as presented. I'm available if you have any questions, and Chris Amos, the agent for the applicant, is available.
Commissioners, y'all have any questions to Pam before we do the public hearing? Okay, Pam, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna open a public hearing, and we're gonna begin with those that oppose. If anyone opposes the application, if you'll step up to the mic. Okay, anyone that may oppose the application, if you'll step up to the mic. Okay, we're gonna close that half of it, and we'll, we'll open up the, those wants to speak in favor of the application, if you'll come up to the podium. Anyone wants to speak in favor? Okay, I see some supporters out there, so, all right, so we're gonna close the public comment completely, and commissioners?
Um, I move that we approve the application SUP 4216 as presented.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If being none, I call the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, and you have your special use permit. So, thank you all. Item two, SUP 4223, Salt Shaker Entertainment. Consider a request for a special use permit to operate an amusement center in the general commercial zoning district. The applicant is proposing to operate a family entertainment system center. The property is located at five five eight one Habersham Street in Zone GC. Parcel ID zero three dash zero four nine five three. Atlantic Southeast Enterprises LLC, owner and Salt Shaker Entertainment Incorporated, applicant. Pam?
Yes, good evening, Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. Again, this is a special use for amusement center. This is located on Habersham Street, it's at the intersection of Community Road and Habersham. It is an existing building. They are requesting the special use for an amusement center in general commercial zoning. They wanna operate a family entertainment center with bounce houses and other activities for children and their families. The twenty-five thousand square foot building and parking are existing, and the building is currently vacant. Again, this is the zoning and the location of the property. The future land use calls for this area to be industrial. This is a photograph of the existing building. This is a site plan showing the existing building. Again, they are gonna operate completely within the walls of the existing building. Here are the modifications they'll be making to the interior of the building. The Planning Commission, on February fourth, voted six to zero to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of this application. You see before you your possible actions. These are your possible motions. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval of application SUP 4223 as presented. I'm available if you have any questions, and the applicant and owner are available if you have any questions.
Uh, commissioners, y'all have any questions with Pam? Okay, Pam, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, this is a public hearing. We will begin with those that may be opposed to the applicant, application. If anyone will step up to the mic, if you're opposed to it. If anyone's opposed to it, please step up to the mic. Okay, seeing none, anyone in favor of the application that wants to speak, just come up to the mic if you will, state your name for the record.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mike Johnson with Southeastern Enterprises, as owner of the building. As you know, the building's been empty for some time, it's been difficult finding the right tenant. Mr. Ragstall, who will also introduce himself, has got a tremendous idea. I hope that y'all feel the same, and I wanna know if you have any questions at this point.
Commissioner, got any questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, just a pleasure to be here, and thank you for your consideration. I'm Jeff Ragstall, and we're starting Brunswick Adventures, and we're looking forward to providing a fun and safe place to entertain children and let them have birthday parties. So, thank you for your consideration.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak in favor of the application?
Jeff Kilgore, um, this property's owned by Bob Doris. Uh, a good friend, and, uh, he's sick, and, uh, he's a World War II hero. Lost his hearing flying bombers, and, uh, I think you should consider naming the Veterans' Memorial Park. There's no man that's spent more money and made any bigger investment in Glen County and the city of Brunswick. I certainly support this application because it's, uh, is a building that's long been vacant and been a thorn in Bob's side, um, but, uh, he's a, uh, he's a king amongst men in Glen County, and I believe deserves even further recognition beyond just approving this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor of the application? Okay, seeing none and hearing none, we close the public hearing portion. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve SUP 4223 as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll call the motion. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, you have your application.
Mr. Chairman, uh, motion to approve consent agenda, general business, with the exception of any item that a commissioner may wish to pull to for discussion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, any discussion? I call the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All right, thank you, that is, uh, approved. General business, item seven. Consider adoption of an amendment to chapter two dash five of the Glen County Code of Ordinances, revising section two dash five dash one oh four pertaining to the procedures and requirements for issuing a permit for land disturbance activity and for other purposes. Uh, Ms. Thompson, if you wanna...
Yes, sir, good evening, Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation for this. As you are aware, the county has ordinances regarding clearing of property, and, um, currently you cannot get a land disturbance activity permit, an LDA, on the island without some formal approval before that, either a site plan or preliminary plaque, construction plans. And the theory behind that is we don't want people to clear land and then the project fall through, or something not happened, and that land is destabilized and vegetation, wildlife habitat disrupted. So, when the board approved that back in two thousand and fifteen, they applied it only to the island and not to the mainland, but since that time, there's been some concern that this is an environmental issue for all of Glen County, and so what this ordinance does is take the same ordinance that applies on the islands today and applies it countywide. So, this does not impact agricultural timbering operations, our ordinances don't cover that, so it would not harm or negatively impact any type of activities like that. This applies to sites that some of you are familiar with, they go ahead and clearcut it, and then the project falls through and it lays vacant, and we have some environmental impact from that. So, that's the ordinance before you. It is to the code of ordinances, not the zoning ordinance, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and tonight's a public hearing to make it, to make it effective countywide.
Okay, um...
Not good? Not countywide? Oh, no, public hearing, I'm kidding you. I'm kidding. I, I got carried away with all those public hearings we just went through.
Um, I think, I think before we get into questions from the commissioners, Mr. Attorney, could you talk about the issues that Mr. Kilgore raised?
Sure, commissioners, this, um, this is not an amendment to the zoning ordinance, this is not an amendment to the subdivision ordinance. Those ordinance amendments require hearings, this is not that. There is no public hearing requirement for this ordinance this evening.
Commissioners, y'all have any questions for the attorney? Y'all clear on that?
Um, could you, no, I'm not clear on that, actually. So, this is not an amendment, is that what you're saying?
It, it's an ordinance amendment, but this is not an ordinance amendment to the zoning ordinance. This is to the code of ordinances. The, the, a zoning amendment requires a public hearing, a, an amendment to the subdivision ordinance requires a public hearing. This is just, this is an amendment to the code of ordinances, and there's no public hearing requirement for this ordinance amendment, but it is an ordinance amendment, just no public hearings required, no publications required. So, what's on your agenda tonight, it's been done properly, it's probably before you. If there's any other questions, I'll, I'll be happy to answer those.
Um, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm having a senior moment, I'm still not understanding.
No, no public hearings required.
Okay, but it's not an amendment, but it is an amendment.
It, it's an amendment to the code of ordinances. So, we have, we have ordinance, we have zoning ordinances, and we have ordinances to the subdivision regulations, and then we have a code of ordinances that are separate, those are separate ordinances.
Okay.
And so, some ordinances require public hearings, I'm sorry, some amendments to ordinances require public hearings and some don't. By law, you have to have a public hearing for zoning ordinance amendments. By law, you don't have to have a public hearing for this type of ordinance change.
Okay.
And, and your ordinances don't require one. And obviously, that's, at that point, that's a policy question, if you want to change that, to have a public hearing, you may, but as currently written, they don't not, do not require a public hearing.
Okay. So, as I understand it, then, what we're about to do, or proposing to do, is gonna further restrict property rights without giving property owners any opportunity to come forth and state their opinions and, and whatever objections they have to that. So, from that standpoint alone, I'm against it, but further, we already have LDA requirements for the entire county, so if someone's gonna come in and, and clear a site, they have to obtain a permit to be able to do that. Within those permit applications, there's certain requirements that they have to do and maintain on that property. So, I see us already having effectual control over site clearing, and we can maintain clearing of properties. If a property owner has a five-acre tract that he wants to clear just to sell the timber off of, for no other reasons but to sell the timber for need of income or whatever else, he shouldn't have to come before us and, and require a site plan approval for something that he doesn't intend to site plan.
Correct, and, and Commissioner, if he is timbering the example you gave, that doesn't require a permit from us.
So, timbering doesn't have to be forest agriculture.
No, sir. Timbering is permitted through the state as a timbering activity, it's not managed by the county.
So, as we see out on Harry Drigger's, they, they have come in in several sites and timbered it.
They came, the permission they got from us was actually for surface mining, because the dirt that they were moving...
No, 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 not those sites, not that site around behind the school.
Okay.
But, but out on Harry Drigger's, uh, there, there are two sites, Eagle Crest, I think a future phase of Eagle Crest was cleared, and the front of Lexington Place was cleared.
That, that may be prior to my tenure here, the only...
No, it was, it was done last year. But, but my point being, if they can do that, and they left both tracks uncleared, uncleaned, they just stripped cleared it, left the debris, you know, that's... That's perfectly okay, but somebody that comes in and clears it, destumps it, puts field dirt on it, and grades it, whether or not it's graded properly, whether or not the drainage, that can't be done. That, that makes no sense to me. So, I, I think, I think we're overstepping. I, I think that if we're going to further restrict anybody's property rights, they have a right to come before this Board in a hearing to be heard. And I, I would oppose this on, on that objection alone.
Commissioners, if you want to have a public hearing, you certainly may. That's, that's, this Commission's prerogative, to hold a public hearing if you'd like to have one on this. So, it just is not required by your ordinances.
And, and I get that. Whether it should be or not, I get that. But, but to move forward on this, under this provision, without public input, I don't think it's fair to the property owners of Glen County.
My opinion. I concur with that.
Commissioners, any other questions? Yeah. For my two cents worth, I understand that we could do this and all, but, but... I do think if, you know, if we were to move forward, we should only do it after, well, we have two Commissioners that are not here tonight. And that always bothers me when we have Commissioners not present on certain things. And looking at this, probably be good if we'd had a work session and kinda, you know, give us a little bit more time to get into it, and just see where we're going. And allow the public to have a little bit more time to weigh in with us. And so, I don't see a rush on this. I think maybe at the moment, you know, we'll, we just need to make a motion, whatever appropriate motion you guys wanna make, whether to defer it, or take an up or down vote, whatever you wanna do. He wants you to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to deny this section revision to the Code of Ordinances.
Second. Okay Commissioners, we have a motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion? I'm gonna call for the vote. Did you wanna?
Call the vote?
Okay, I didn't know if you wanted to say something. Okay Commissioners, I call the vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is for, for, and those opposed?
Upstaying potential conflict of interest.
We have one abstention, so... So, vote it down.
Okay, thank you gentlemen.
Okay, thank you Pam. Commissioners, we need to go into executive session and talk about a potential land matter? If we can get a motion to go into executive session?
For property acquisition, Commissioners.
Property acquisition, I'm sorry.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That's unanimous, okay, we are adjourned to executive session. Quick one. Okay, we need a motion to come out of executive session?
Motion to come out of executive session.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend approval of the minutes, executive session, February sixth and February eighteenth.
Motion and second on the minutes. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, recommend that we accept the recommendation by the Director of Community Development regarding property acquisition.
Motion and second, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, that is all approved, and we are done. We're outta here.